I will now call to order the March 6, 2025, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. County Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Vice Chair Savas, thank you. First, our staff support today, County Council Jane Vedo, Clerk to the Board Andrew Giraki. Commissioner Fireside and Chair Roberts are both out of the office today. Vice Chair Savas will chair the meeting. With that, roll call, Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Vice Chair Savas.
Present. Thank you. And I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you join me?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Powerful words. Good morning. Welcome, everyone. First up is public communication. I do want to take the chair's prerogative here and just read the statement I have prepared. And some of us have already done that, but I just want to read mine. And then we'll be able to have some conversation amongst us afterwards today. So we have a number of people signed up, so we're going to have a long meeting. I'm going to continue to allow the three minutes time limit, so I'm not going to cut that short. I think we can get it done today. So please honor that and respect that. So I'm going to read my statement, and here goes. The charges against Commissioner Fireside are extremely concerning. The Board of Commissioners will consider all options in the absence of an immediate resignation. I believe Commissioner Fireside should recognize that the public's trust in our county is at stake. In my 20 years of public service, when faced with very difficult circumstances, it is wise to consider what is in the best interest of the county and its citizens over what is best for oneself. So those are my comments. With that, I will jump right into public testimony. And testimony unit is limited to three minutes. I ask that comments be respectful and courteous to all. And as a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc.clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. Be mindful that a lot of media has come out. I've read as much as I can, as fast as I can. We've gotten a lot of emails. I have not read everything, only because of how much, this is the vast flow of things. So your testimony here is appreciated. And I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I'll take in-person testimony first. So Clerk, would you please moderate the in-person and virtual testimony?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you for joining us today. If you would like to speak today and you are attending in person, please fill out a blue card that can be found by the door and place it in the box. They will be read in the order that they are received. When I call your name, please come forward and introduce yourself, and you will have three minutes. I will introduce the name to speak, and also, as an early warning to the next person, say who will follow that person. First up today, I have Shipley Morgan. Shipley Morgan, if you could please come forward. After Shirley or Shipley Morgan, we'll have Rick Dodge. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner Savas. Is this on?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioner Savas and Commissioners and staff. Good to see you again. Shirley Morgan from Rhododendron. On January 7, the Department of Forestry mailed 106,000 certified letters to property owners designated as wildfire hazard. On January 29, I filed an appeal due March 10. Thousands of others have received non-renewals, cancellations, premium increases, and refusals to insure, making it impossible to sell their properties. In one case, the premium rose from 1,300 to 6,400. Legislators have been flooded with feedback related to insurance, land use, and risk classification. My premium increased 56%, where Clackamas County CMAT notes my property as moderate risk. I'm located 100 feet off Highway 26, 1 mile from the fire department, and 3/4 of a mile from the Zigzag Ranger Station. I contacted 15 insurance companies for quotes. They refused to insure. Why? Property on wildfire hazard zone. The county dormant property on Salmon River is now located in wildfire hazard, likely to find it difficult to insure or afford. ODF maps accessible online have become an influential resource for underwriters. SB 82 says companies cannot use the maps to increase rates, non-renew or cancel policies. But SB 82 has little clout in providing evidence, enforcement, or defined consequences in even viewing the map. Companies say they're doing their own assessments. I'm not an expert in fire safety, but I am an expert in common sense. On February 17, Governor Kotek put on hold appeals until after the legislative session as there is momentum to repeal the hazard map. But the damage is done. This map was to be a critical tool to enhance preparedness and response to the threat of wildfires throughout the state. Instead, it has become a hanging noose against only ascertained property owners. The map should be renamed Oregon Wildfire Prevention Map, looking at the dangers of fire ignition, spread, and containment. This is a state, county, city, urban, rural, and federal challenge. Last week, Deschutes County Commissioners voted to represent and appeal the hazard map rating for over 21,000 property owners. On behalf of property owners in Clackamas County who have been identified in wildfire hazard, I'm asking our Commissioners, AOC, and our County Administrator to urgently ask the legislature to support a repeal of this hazard wildfire map. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think with your agenda today, you might not have any. But I have a big pack that I'll be sending you.
We'll research it. Shirley, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rick Dodge. And in a change, we would like to have people come forward two at a time. Thank you. You'll still speak one at a time, but have the person who's on deck also join at the testimony table. So joining Rick at the table will be Colin Cambridge. First up will be Rick Dodge. Please introduce yourself. You'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I want to address right off the bat the obvious in the room. And I'm pretty amped up, like a lot of people here, about Ms. Fireside's situation because it was pretty embarrassing to see all this on the local news. And I guess the frustration here is what is needed to make something happen so that we can put Mark Scholl, he's here today, let's put him right up there right now. Because we can trust the guy. I called the Elections Office this morning because I wanted to know if the voter's pamphlet, with all the bios and the endorsements and so on and so forth, are ever fact-checked. And they said no. And I pretty much figured that. But going over Ms. Fireside's, what she put in the pamphlet is, if I was a voter, it would be pretty convincing to a point that she would be something that I might, that a person would vote for. Tumfounded. It's just beyond belief. Second thing, if public safety is number one, the Sheriff Brandonberg, I wish Chair Roberts was here today because I think he knows probably more about this than all of us here. The Sheriff Brandonberg, if she committed to cooperate with ICE should a situation come up. Because we, the public, don't know that. And we're not in the know. Everything seems to be a secret. If you call down there to the Sheriff's Office, that type of a question is sometimes you get hung up on. Because I've done that before. And anyway, I'm done. Thank you.
Colin Cambridge, please go ahead.
Thank you so much. Again, my name is Colin Cambridge. I am an elected precinct committee person for Precinct 122, South Canby, House District 51. I want to thank you Commissioners for being here today. I really appreciate that the core values are represented of this organization for every meeting. And I want to specifically call out individual professionalism, integrity, and trust. And I think that the three of you have demonstrated that today just by your presence. And I want to call out Chair Craig Roberts for his absence. Short of a court order, it is offensive that he is not present today and is in violation of the core values of this organization. Furthermore, I would like to testify that Sheriff Angela Brandonberg should be considered complicit in the... Well, let's just face it, it's becoming quite a conspiracy of Melissa Fireside's election to this organization. And her omission and lack of representation to the people is also offensive. And I think violates her sworn duty to protect and serve this county. And I think that she should be considered complicit in this matter as well. Furthermore, I specifically ask for the immediate resignation of Melissa Fireside. And if she should not willingly resign, I ask this organization to seek her immediate removal. If it is acceptable and within the bounds of this organization, I do believe that Mark Scholl should be installed as a Commissioner, being duly represented by the people in the past, as well as being very closely represented in this recent election and losing by a very small margin. I think that that is justifiably a decision that this organization should consider. I very much appreciate you and the hard work that you do to represent the people of Clackamas County. And I encourage you to continue serving to the fullest of your abilities. Thank you for your time.
Next will be Mark Reekseker. Mark Reekseker. And after him will be Rick Riley. Mark Reekseker and Rick Riley, come forward. Introduce yourselves, and you'll have three minutes each, please. Thank you.
And while they're coming up, Gary, could you address the absence of Chair Roberts?
Yes, thank you. Chair Roberts had a previously scheduled absence. He's in Washington, DC advocating with our congressional delegation for some county priorities. So that was pre-scheduled prior to any news.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure people clear that he's actually working and working in DC today.
Mark Reekseker.
Go ahead, please.
I live in Oregon City. Let's have a little Fireside chat, shall we? Where's common sense gone? Why can't a person indicted on felony charges take administrative leave and be paid for it? If we, here in the gallery, don't work, we don't get paid. Why is government different? Apparently, when there's no pain of the money getting stolen directly from your wallet, government officials don't care. But let me tell you, we care. We are tired of the never-ending government waste and corruption. Thank God for President Trump, who appointed Elon Musk to find and eliminate government waste and corruption. Hopefully, those efforts will trickle down to the state level, and we will experience a well-run local government. Maybe then, instead of seeing Democrats-sponsored state bills to increase taxation, we'll see fiscal responsibility and reduced taxation. But then, maybe I live in a utopian dream world. So what can this board do? Why not start with some fiscal fiduciary responsibility and pass a motion that if a board member takes personal administrative leave due to felony indictments, they don't get paid? Where can we, the tax-paying citizens, get a job that pays $130,000 a year to stay home and not work? Let me know. I'd sign up in a hurry. What is really sad, as reported a while ago, people, including Chair Roberts, knew this information before the election. People with moral and ethical integrity wouldn't have hidden details from the public before an election. Oh, wait, that's the Democratic Party playbook. Can you say Hunter Biden laptop? If most people would have known about this corruption of a candidate for Clackamas County Commissioner, would the election results have changed? We can't say for sure. But what we know is that had Mark Scholl been re-elected, we would still have a Commissioner that cares about this county and has morals and ethics which dictates his actions to always do what's right. Commissioner Fireside should do what's right and resign now. But does she know right from wrong? The indictment would prove otherwise. So as a board, you can do what's right. Cut out the dead wood that doesn't fuel the county fire and be on our side. If Commissioner Fireside doesn't work, pass a motion that she doesn't get paid to sit on her couch at home. Also, demand that she resign now. Have some intestinal fortitude to do what's right and just. Have a blessed day. Make America and Oregon great again.
Ms. Riley, please go ahead.
My name is Rick Riley. I'm the Chair of your county's Republican Party. My voice carries no more weight than anyone here. However, as the Chair, I do speak for those in our party who have packed these chambers multiple times in the evening, but can't today because they're at work paying for this building and everything in it. We've been after the Commission for years to return at least one night a week where those who pay the freight for all you do can find the time to participate in the government that's supposed to belong to them. It's unconscionable that those who employ you have to beg you to provide a time when they can meet with you without taking a sick or vacation day. In every private business, the employee makes themselves available to the employer, but not here. The Clackamas County Republican Party once again goes on record as petitioning the county commission to hold at least one meeting per month in the evening that the people may have a voice in their government concerning the recently-elected Commissioner Fireside with charges of forging the signature of a state lawmaker, among others. Even though she is innocent until proven guilty, remaining active as a Commissioner due to the magnitude of these current distractions is an impossibility. And taking a leave of absence while she addresses these accusations is out of the question as there's no way taxpayers should foot her salary through this ordeal, which will take months, if not years. Regarding the investigation itself, from my understanding, it was known but sat on prior to the election by Chair Roberts, Sheriff Angela Brandonberg, and our local news agencies. Like those who sat on the Hunter Biden laptop story in front of the stolen 2020 election, cover-ups and lying lead to catastrophic consequences. It led to a Joe Biden four-year American catastrophe. And now a Clackamas County Commissioner begins almost on day one of her term with a felony investigation that you all knew about and kept quiet. The people here are tired of being manipulated by power-hungry politicians. Ms. Fireside must resign or this commission can kiss goodbye any integrity it hopes to have during her tenure. We don't wish her any ill will. We just want her gone. Let her deal with her private business privately and not on our dime. Thank you.
Next up will be Ranelle Muro and Les Poole. Please come forward. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having this public testimony today. Clackamas County Commissioner Melissa Fireside's arraignment on eight theft charges, including first-degree aggravated theft and identity theft, casts a dark shadow over her integrity and fitness for office. Accused of stealing from an 83-year-old man and forging the signature of State Representative April Dobson, Fireside's alleged actions reveal a profound breach of trust. These are not mere accusations of mismanagement. They are serious crimes that strike at the heart of public accountability. Worse still, Fireside concealed these allegations from voters before her election, denying them the chance to make an informed decision about their representative. She must resign immediately. And any notion of paid leave should be dismissed outright. Clackamas County cannot entrust its finances to someone accused of such egregious misconduct, especially when public funds are at stake. Fireside's alleged crimes are a betrayal of both the vulnerable and the democratic process itself. Exploiting an elderly man for financial gain demonstrates a callous disregard for those she swore to serve, while forging a lawmaker's signature suggests a willingness to manipulate legal and political systems for personal benefit. These actions, if proven, are not isolated lapses in judgment, but a pattern of deceit that undermines her credibility as a leader. Voters elected Fireside to safeguard their interests, not to prey upon the defenseless or abuse her access to power. Her failure to disclose these allegations prior to the election compounds the offense, effectively deceiving the electorate and eroding the foundation of her mandate. Transparency is non-negotiable in public office, and Fireside silenced robbed citizens of their right to choose knowingly. Resignation is the only acceptable course. A leave of absence, especially with pay, would signal that Clackamas County tolerates corruption, rewarding Fireside with taxpayer dollars while she faces justice. The county coffers already under scrutiny cannot be entrusted to someone accused of theft and fraud. Public office demands unimpeachable character, and Fireside's alleged actions disqualify her from meeting that standard. Every day she remains in office risks further damage to public confidence and county governance, potentially destabilizing critical services. Fireside's pre-election silence denied voters transparency, a cornerstone of democracy. Anything less is in front of the people she was elected to represent. We demand her resignation now.
Good morning, Les Poole. I've been here probably 300 times through the years. I remember when Commissioner Savas was elected, I let him know that somehow, some way, I was going to get one evening meeting a month. And he put me to the challenge, and it took quite a while, but eventually it happened. And it was a pleasure to hear Rick request that they be returned. I'm a big proponent for public involvement. And as someone that's been publicly involved, I've got some comments briefly about Ms. Fireside. But before that, I want to hold up a publication. It's the Hoodview News. The reason I'm holding it up is there's a long, very detailed article in there that I submitted about the Portland Water Bureau Treatment Plant. And that was, that project was appealed to Luba. The city basically laughed everyone off, began construction, tore up the road, spent $230 million on a project that has ballooned from $800 million somehow to $2 billion in a couple of years. And now they have no chance to appeal that. So what do we do now? We're Clackamas County. We can't do a lot. What are they doing? They're down there in Salem promoting a bill to circumvent the Oregon Land Use Plan because they dumped that thing on farmland without looking elsewhere. And I made that argument. I didn't need to go talk to an attorney to make that argument and have it ring true. It's just disgusting. What's equally disgusting is, of course, the conduct of Ms. Fireside. You know, I spoke a couple of months ago, and I pointed out it was her conduct after it came out, taking down her social media, going dark, no comment at all. And here we are, we're going to supposedly be paying her over $10,000 a month so that we can pay, as you've heard, for her legal defense. And if the Chair were here, we'd have a two-to-two commission. So right now, we have a two-to-two commission. We have a four-person commission. I don't know how you're supposed to function. One thing I would strongly request, and I think it could be done today, she needs to be removed from the Budget Committee. My goodness, folks, immediately. And this is something that can be done. Some folks are asking you to maybe do things that you legally can't do or would require a process. This needs to happen today. I don't want her anywhere near our money. I'll close by saying that this does remind me of Commissioner Bernard's situation when he ran up $25,000 in bills on his ethics complaint and dumped them on the public. We all know how that ended. So please, censure her, remove her from the Budget Committee, and listen to these folks. Because the room is so full, there's people out in the hall. And what that means is that we're in the middle of spending a lot of time away from getting anything done. I guess that was three minutes. Thank you.
Next up will be Stephen Hunter. And after Stephen Hunter will be Aaron Fernald. Stephen Hunter and Aaron Fernald. Please come forward. You'll have three minutes.
Good morning, County Commissioners. My name is Stephen Hunter. I reside in Wilsonville. Well, here we are, the butt of jokes from other Oregon counties for employing a potential eight-count felon and elder abuser in a critical elected position. Please don't act surprised at this development. You were warned by me and many others in this room multiple times that this was a probable outcome. If Ms. Fireside was allowed to take the oath of office as Commissioner, of concern to me is the timeline of what each of you knew and when did you know of these serious charges. It appears that most of you were conspiring with the media and the Democrat Party of Oregon, sorry for the redundancy, on assuring the news of the allegations were withheld until the majority of ballots were cast. Getting another liberal elected to office appeared to be job one. Is there any reason for the citizens of Clackamas County, or for that matter, the citizens of Oregon, to trust any politician? Is there any reason to trust the Oregon election system? The legacy media, already less trusted than a fly-by-night used car salesman. The same applies to Clackamas County Clerk that apparently held a closed-door swearing-in ceremony for Ms. Fireside. This situation stinks worse than a warehouse full of curing marijuana. So where do we go from here? We now have a lame-duck Commissioner bringing in $130,000 annually plus benefits that refuses to or can't work. With her history of legal actions against other institutions, I would actually prefer she not be allowed to sit on the Board and be in control of my tax money. Ms. Fireside has demonstrated a history of poor judgment and willingness to take advantage of others. It also appears that the new BCC Chair, Mr. Roberts, is shying away from public view. Is he feeling a bit guilty, perhaps? My suggestion for the remaining four board members is to share equally in paying Ms. Fireside's expenses, including legal fees. This burden must not be placed on the backs of the citizens. I suggest a starting amount of $4,000 for each of you a month to... I suggest a starting amount of $4,000 for each of you a month to reimburse the taxpayers of Clackamas County. I think convincing Ms. Fireside to resign would be a much easier and cleaner solution to the situation you have put us in. Thank you.
Next is Erin Fernald. Go ahead, please.
I'm Erin Fernald. I'm a Clackamas County resident, and I'm here on behalf of the Union to talk about the Kaiser premium increase that we, as Union employees, got in January. I love my job here at Clackamas County. It's been a wonderful time for me. I appreciate my managers, my supervisors. I appreciate the work you do. I know how hard and challenging what you do must be. But I just want to put a human face to the situation. I am a hard-working employee. I was going about my business. I did know that our contract was being negotiated by our Union. I was not involved. I had no indication of any of the situation, really. I did not stay in the know. And December 30th, I got an interesting email. I was actually scheduled for vacation that day, but decided to work because there was a critical thing that needed to be done. And so I stepped out of my vacation to work that day. And at the end of the day, I got an email from HR that said, "Oh, your check, by the way, this week is going to be docked extra money." And I was just in shock. I just didn't know why I didn't get notice sooner. If this was going to happen, if this was going to be something that was going to happen, why wasn't it brought to my attention at open enrollment or in an email with notice of 60 days or 90 days? It just seemed so out of the blue. And it broke my trust. You know, as an employee, you expect to get your paycheck. You work hard, and you just expect to get paid. It seems like an easy thing. And to just have deductions taken out that you did not give authority for or know about in any advance, right during the holidays, during vacation time, it was just downright shocking. And it has, to me, it has nothing to do with the contract negotiations or anything with the Union. To me, it was about communication with me and transparency with me about the situation. So I just encourage you to, if something like this arises again, where you guys have to make a difficult call, whatever that is, that you communicate with us, that you give us more notice, that you are transparent with us. And so that's why I'm here today.
We're at a point and stage where I think we can at least have legal counsel comment on the restrictions of communication regarding labor. So, Legal Counsel Veto, could you please explain that?
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. So, the responsibility for talking about impacts on contracts and what will happen if a contract is not reached does lie with the individual bargaining team. So for management and for the Union, management cannot reach in and tell Union members what has been offered. However, I will say that it is my understanding that when it became clear to the management team that there was possible that a Union contract, that the Union would not ratify the contract by the end of the year, and the email was sent out laying out not only the offers, but also the specific impacts to insurance premiums, the Kaiser premium, and asked the Union, let its membership know of these consequences. And in response, the management bargaining team received back a statement that said, "Our communication to members a couple of weeks ago included much of the information contained below. We will not be sending out a joint or county communication to our members. This has been discussed and agreed upon internally by EA officers and the bargaining team." So we feel that responsibility of messaging out the premiums. We attempted to make sure that all the employees knew that and that we were assured that that messaging had been done by the Union.
Thank you. Andrew, could you proceed?
The next blue cards I have, Natalie Lutmer and Lanille Vandermolen. Natalie Lutmer and Lanille Vandermolen, please come forward. You have three minutes.
This is my seventh time back. As you know, I've been here for every single meeting that you've had since the beginning of January, again, regarding the Kaiser monthly premium, what has been discussed. And no matter what reasoning is given about notice, it was still wrong to do it. It comes back to whether or not you can do something, should you do something. I think that the county might have underestimated what their actions have done in regards to this issue. It has absolutely unified the workers. People like me, who were previously ambivalent to the Union and what was happening, are now a little bit on fire. We are very, very upset, and I brought some people here with me. So I want to share a few of the unexpected costs that my family experienced in January and February, and this is just January and February. So when I'm talking about the extra money, the extra $214.75 that you are taking out a month out of my paycheck, in January and February, just a couple of the things are, I had a car repair that was $617. I had an urgent care vet bill that was $267.40. I had fees for a state-level event that my daughter was able to attend. She was selected for it. That was $240. I had just a random increase to my car insurance of $50, and then the PGA rate hike. Those are just a handful of the extra expenses that my family did not budget for, that I had in January and February. Also, in January and February, there were lots of illnesses going around. My two elementary-age children, they caught a virus that had a high fever. They could not be left home alone. They had to be monitored in case we had to take them in urgent care. My scheduled daily shift is a 10-hour shift. The sick time that I receive per month is eight hours, so I don't even get enough sick leave in a month to take one day off. I had to take that time off to stay with my children, and I had to balance that between the leave that I had, hoping that I personally did not get sick because I used up my leave. It was panicking to me. Should I go to work sick? Should I risk getting my coworkers sick? Do I take a day of leave without pay when I'm already being $214, it's already coming out? Luckily, I got sick on the weekend, so I didn't have to worry about that, and I came to work on Monday. But these are the real decisions that the county employees and the EA have to make. We're having to balance these types of things. We shouldn't have to worry about that. Commissioner Schrader, you said at the last meeting, the one that was on Zoom, that you don't understand why the EA hasn't settled its contract, because all the other Unions have. Well, I'm going to venture a guess. It's because you truly don't understand our lives or what we have been saying. I just feel like you have not been listening. You compare our contract to the other Unions' contract. And I will say, if you truly believe that there is parity in what the other Unions have and what you're offering the EA, we can't discuss that now. We can't talk about any of that. But once everything is settled, I will be more than happy to come back, and we can talk about that parity and how that is equal. Make this a priority. These things need to be fixed now.
Ms. Vandermolen, go ahead, please. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Lanille Vandermolen, and I can make this very short. Right now, on a national level, there is an astounding amount of waste, fraud, and abuse, and criminality that's being revealed in our national government. And I realize that we are just a microcosm of that general national malaise. And I can tell you, as a taxpayer, I pay a whopping assessment every year just for the school districts in this county. What I don't want to do is pay one cent toward the legal fees or the home confinement, if that's the word, for Ms. Fireside. I think she needs to pay for every cent of her own upkeep and legal expenses and not transfer any of that cost onto me. It's not fair. And if this county wants to be known for its integrity, it needs transparency immediately, and if there's any illegal way, to remove her from her position. Thank you.
Next will be Maria Magallón, Maria Magallón, and Samantha Ferris. Maria Magallón and Samantha Ferris, please come forward. You'll have three minutes each, please. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. It's great to be here. My name is Maria Magallón. I'm a resident of Molalla, and I'm here in support of the Employees Associations for Clackamas County. As you can see, there is many of us here. More importantly, I'm here representing those of us that cannot be here because they cannot afford to take an hour out of their day to be here fighting for their rights. So I feel that it is my duty to be here in support of them. We have amazing folks in the Employees Union, people providing essential and life-saving services. These services that our most vulnerable communities need to survive. Well, now it's our Union members that are fighting to survive. Many, I know, have had to take a second job on the weekends and on evenings. They are accessing the very services that Clackamas County provides to make ends meet. They are taking loans out, high-interest loans, that they can't afford because they need to be able to pay the higher insurance premiums. We knew two days before the insurance premium hike went up. That is not enough notice. People cannot plan in two days how they are going to come up with the extra money when they already are in a dire situation and barely making ends meet. A lot of our employees are single parents with children, and a lot of them are taking care of elderly and aging parents. So this may not seem like a lot of money, but it is to a lot of our very employees. We are dedicated to providing public service to our most vulnerable communities. But right now, I am asking that you please support our own employees who are in this very situation and do whatever you have to do to bring this to a close in order for employees to continue providing the services that we are proud to be providing. We are hurting, and we need this to come to a resolution as quickly as possible. I know that we value our county employees here. I've heard that many times. There's a sign behind me that says transparency equals trust, and I very much believe that, and I hope that our leaders continue to uphold those values, because that is what we are asking for. Transparency equals trust, and please, please, value your county employees like you have said that you do, and make us feel that. We truly are asking that you come to a resolution as quickly as you can so we can survive and continue to be proud to work at Clackamas County. Thank you for your time.
Greetings. Good morning. I'm writing this statement on behalf of the Children's of Incarcerated Parents Program with Northwest Family Services. My name is Aubrey DeVore, and I'm a youth peer support specialist supervisor with the same agency. I stand before you 27 years old, and like I said, a supervisor of my own program, but I used to be 13, and I had no idea where I was going. Both of my parents were battling addiction, and my mom was in and out of jail. At this time, the Children of Incarcerated Parents Program provided me with a mentor who showed me that maybe I didn't have only one option with what I could do with my life. I was referred to the Children of Incarcerated Parents Program, and this mentor provided me with lots of support and guided me every step of the way. She was somebody who I could talk about everything that was going on in my life. My mentor stayed with me through middle school and high school, and even through my first year of college. I'm a first-generation college graduate, and my mentor was the sole reason that I chose to go there. While my parents gave an example of one life path, my mentor highlighted another one that I could choose. The Children of Incarcerated Parents Program is essential to our community, and the continued funding would allow more youth like me to feel the support and guidance that is essential for our development. Thank you, Aubrey DeVore, a proud former participant and hopeful community member.
I am Samantha Ferris, a program manager at Northwest Family Services. I'm very passionate about SIP. SIP is a legacy program, and it's unique to Clackamas County. And as you heard, a life support to over 130 children ages 8 to 18 over the past 15 years. Without continued funding, these children face a bleak future. I want you to know that not one of our former students has spent a single day in jail as adults. None have lost their children to child welfare. None are living homeless and on the streets. None have died by suicide or using intravenous drugs. Our students have grown into loving mothers, caregivers, soldiers, social workers, and peer support program supervisors like Aubrey here. Our funding is slated to end in June. We've received $250,000 over the past two years. We ask the Board to consider continued funding for $200,000 each year to support our county's most vulnerable children. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next will be Glenda Schrere, Glenda Schrere and Paul Fruen. Please come forward. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to address this Commission, and thank you for the three Commissioners who showed up today. That shows leadership and integrity, and people notice that, so thank you. My name is Glenda Schrere, and my family and I live in Gladstone. Clackamas County collects our taxes and gathers it with the other taxpayers' money in Clackamas County and pays the salaries of each Commissioner here on this Board, as well as the services, the staff, and the facilities. I'm looking around the room, and I do not see Melissa Fireside, and I do not see Chair Roberts. And that's concerning. Where is Chair Roberts? In a time of crisis, a leader shows up. Even if he had other obligations somewhere else, a leader shows up. We are in a time of crisis, and he's nowhere to be found. I'm wondering why Melissa Fireside is still holding the position of Commissioner. I've heard that she has plans to take an extended leave to deal with some legal issues that have come up. To be blunt, she is the villain in this situation. She's not a victim. And according to the Willamette Weekly article, state prosecutors have charged her with eight felony counts of theft, saying that she forged the signature of a state lawmaker and defrauded an 83-year-old man of at least $74,000. While I understand that this Commission does not have the ability to remove her, I do believe that you could draft a resolution stating that you are asking for her resignation, and I beg you to do that. Melissa Fireside is a distraction, plain and simple. And now, speaking directly to Melissa Fireside, though I doubt she's watching this, I, as a taxpayer and someone who you are supposed to represent, ask that you resign and that you stop sucking on the teat of taxpayer money. Thank you.
Mr. Fruen, go ahead, please.
I haven't been here nearly as many times before you as Les, you know, 230 times. So I apologize for that, and I congratulate Les for being here. I also congratulate all the people in this room who take the time to come and talk to you guys and let you know what we feel. Because every time I come here, I learn about new things that even I'm not aware of. And I'm retired. It's a lot easier for me to come here in the mornings, and I, you know, applaud Rick for encouraging you, and I know Paul and other people, you know, have said this before, that, you know, we do need to have night meetings. It's a lot more convenient for most of us to It's a lot more convenient for most of us to be able to come in the evenings than it is during the day. So I encourage you to do that. As far as Melissa Fireside and all the comments that have been made here, it's kind of like, I guess I can just say ditto, 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 ditto. It's unconscionable that we're at this point, particularly when it seems like that there's been a lot of information about this that people knew about before this even happened. She never even should have been here, and she probably wouldn't had all this information come out. So I too encourage you guys to encourage her to resign. You probably don't have the legal rights, it sounds like, to be able to do that. But as fellow commissioners, to save the county from the embarrassment of all that we're going to have to go through to deal with this problem, you guys take the leadership and encourage her to resign. And I know some of you have already, you know, at least one of you has already encouraged her to do that. This brings back up to me, I've been here before, you know, testifying about election integrity, and it comes right back to that again, too. You know, you guys need to, you, along with Angela Brandonberg, need to accept your responsibility in terms of your funding, you know, a system, an election system here, that a lot of people don't agree with. I mean, probably at least half of the people in this room would say that there's problems with our election process. And you guys need to take the leadership because you fund, again, that function, you know, to be able to encourage them or put some restrictions on them to not do certain things. And there's a lot of information out there that the Election Integrity, Clackamas County Election Integrity Committee can give you in terms of problems with the elections process that need to be addressed. And I think that they need to be addressed by the commission because you hold the purse strings for that organization. So I thank you for all you're doing. Again, it's unconscionable that Craig Roberts couldn't be here today with what was just said here. He should have been here to show the leadership that he needs to. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Next will be Ray Gordon. Ray Gordon. After Ray Gordon will be Asa Hoffman. Ray Gordon and Asa Hoffman, please come forward. Each have three minutes. Thank you.
First, I want to say thank you, Ben, Martha, and Paul, for being here in person. I'm going to take a different approach on this. I wanted to talk to Melissa directly. Okay, good, that's not mine. I wanted to talk to Melissa directly, and I wanted to thank her. As somebody that ran beside her for position four, I know how hard it is to put yourself out. So I want to thank her. I want to thank her for wanting to serve the citizens. I want to thank her for her words that I heard while on the campaign trail and watching her and listening to her. It takes a lot to put yourself out there. But what I really want to do is I want to thank her for standing behind all those standing behind all those words and wanting to put the citizens first. I want to thank her for stepping down, and that's all I had to say.
Dear Clackamas County Commission and community members, thank you for graciously granting me time this morning. I'm Asa Hoffman. I'm an appointed precinct committee person in House District 41. Since very much has already been said about Commissioner Fireside, I'll keep my comments brief today for the sake of salutary order. Honest, open government for all. That was the closing statements for Melissa Fireside in the voter's pamphlet. A very fine closing statement, in fact. Pursuant to that end, I respectfully join the chorus of those in this room and outside of it calling for her resignation for the sake of honest, open government for all. That phrase is pertinent to not just my concerns, but the concerns of others in this room for their own issues. It's a noble goal, honest, open government for all citizens. So I implore you humbly, as a constituent, to pursue that goal and dedicate your labors to that end. Thank you.
This is a final call. If you have not yet spoken today in person and would like to speak, this is a final call to please fill out a blue card that can be found by the door and deposit in the bin. Again, this is your final opportunity. If you are attending this meeting today in person, please fill out a blue card and place it in the bin. My final blue card that I have is Alex Gonzalez. Alex Gonzalez, please come forward. You'll have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Alex Gonzalez, and I am the union president here for the Clackamas County Employee Association, a union here that serves over 1,300 members in various offices, such as health centers, social services, juvenile, district attorney's office, facilities, technology services, and many more. I'm here today to express my concern about a number of things on behalf of my members. First and foremost is a lack of ample notice on the increase of the Kaiser premiums, which we've talked about several times now, going from $88.46 to now $303.20. This has been a hot-bun issue, and I know several members have already expressed their concerns the last few weeks since January. However, today, I'm addressing the newest escalation of punitive actions taken upon my members. It was revealed some time last week that members of the EA were being told that their sick and vacation time leaves were being denied or being held on indefinite hold by management. There was not an official announcement, but rather, this was pieced together through communications through members, screenshots communicated to them by their management, that this was the new directive. Given that the selection of March 29th is shortly after the 30-day cooldown, and no strike has been called yet, we feel this is very punitive in nature. Members have scheduled vacations, surgeries, and other time off that they have and earned. We're doing our best to avoid a potential strike that could affect services across Clackamas County, but our members continue to feel slighted by these actions being taken. I'm hoping to find a solution soon with contract bargaining being ended. I'm sure you're aware, but March 17th, the bargaining team and the EA, Clackamas County, has a next scheduled mediation session. My members on the bargaining team have made a commitment to be there as long as it takes to get the contract settled so we can move forward. And I hope that the board makes themselves available to make decisions on that day. I'm not going to say, you know, be there, because I think the rules state that you can't be there. But I hope that you make yourselves available so we can get this done and move forward as a whole. And that's it for me. Thank you.
This is a final call. Again, if you have not testified, you are in person attending and would like to speak and not have spoken today, please fill out a blue card.
I'm just going to recognize Commissioner Schrader. I'm going to take, again, I'm asking my colleagues to try to abide by the new chairs. But go ahead, I think it's important that we-
Can you explain this last piece?
This came as a surprise to both, all of us here.
That has just been said here, because that is a surprise to us.
I've heard this twice from representatives of the EA, and I've asked you twice, and I'll ask you a third time. Talk to me, please. If this is happening, I need to know where so I can address it. That should not be happening, that vacation or sick time is denied for union activity. So I can't help if I don't know about it. So please, please, talk to me. I'm right here or after this meeting, so I can investigate this further.
Yeah, because this is something that has become, it's a surprise to all three of us up here.
It is to me as well.
Okay, thank you.
And I also just want to just appreciate Mr. Gonzalez at least recognizing that there are restrictions on the board, what the board can do and not do. And I appreciate outlining what Council Veto outlined, what we can do and can't do. The conundrum is, while we hope that all those communications are done by protocol, you know, we are really limited in what we can do. I think that's really the message. And so we're hopeful that we can get to a resolution on this matter as soon as possible. So with that, let's go to our virtual public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair. If you are attending this meeting virtually today and would like to speak, I'll now ask you to please raise your hand. Use the raise hand feature on Zoom, and I will call on you in the order that I see. First, I see Eileen Aguilar. Eileen Aguilar, you'll have three minutes. I'll unmute you.
Good morning, commissioners. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity also to speak today. My name is Eileen Aguilar. I've been a dedicated Clackamas County employee for nearly six years, commuting from Salem for four years because I truly believe in the county's mission and spirit values that guide our work. I stand before you today to affirm my support for the Clackamas County Employee Association. I have to ask, where is the spirit when it comes to supporting employees like me? I've been dealing with a rare disease, and after finally establishing care, I returned from medical leave only to find out that my insurance premiums had increased significantly. I was forced to change plans only to discover the new insurance wasn't even available where I live. Because of this, I lost access to treatment and remain untreated, struggling to find the care that I need. My daughter, and for those of you who are parents, I really want you to imagine your child telling you after struggling to find a doctor in their teens and finally finding one. My daughter, I had to tell her, hey, you know what? We're not Kaiser anymore. We have to go to Providence because we can't afford it. And she said, Mom, please. She's like, right when I found a doctor who actually listens to me. The financial burden is one thing, but the personal toll is even greater. In fact, the county states, "We foster a workplace that promotes accountability and continuous improvement by supporting employee health, well-being, and work-life balance." How can we stand by this statement when employees are left choosing between their health and their job? I've exhausted all my sick time. I was exhausted. What I have, I think I have eight hours. I have to decide, do I go to work in pain? Do I just continue this cycle? When insurance changes leave us untreated and struggling, when our trust in the county's commitment to its workforce is totally shaken. This is not just about wages. This is about stability, access to healthcare, and the well-being of the employees who serve this county. The choices made in bargaining have real consequences on our health, on our families, and our ability to continue serving this community. And that is every single person in this room. Clackamas County has the power to do better, to prioritize its employees, to ensure that no one has to experience what my family has gone through, and I can only imagine what many others have. I urge Clackamas County to uphold the spirit values that guide us all: service, professionalism, integrity, respect, individual accountability, and trust. I do believe we're all in this together. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Next, I see Tony Cannon. Tony Cannon, I'll unmute you, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Did you hear me? It kept asking me to unmute.
Yes, we can hear you now. Please proceed.
Okay, so my name's Tony Cannon. I am a registered voter in Clackamas County and a resident of Clackamas County, and I'm a proud member of the EA Union. I am also here to just so much, show my support for a union that tries to do the best they can, best for us with what they can, and also the Kaiser premiums. I have ongoing health issues that I was not about to change my health insurance while all of this is going on. I've been a member of Kaiser since 1976, so I'm very established there. And I thought that working for Clackamas County would be great for me because of the Kaiser coverage. However, the added expense every month has caused me to not grocery shop like I normally would and had to rethink how I eat every week. I am single, but I also have bills to pay. And as we know, inflation has really hit us. And what I also know is that we aren't asking for a lot. None of us got into this profession that work in social services, especially to try to get rich. It just doesn't happen. We all live paycheck to paycheck. So when that paycheck is cut by $200, it means something has to give. And I just want everyone to know that what we're asking for is the same thing that every other person gets that's not in our union. So I'm just saying that I just wanted you to know that I support our union, and I'm hoping that you guys pay attention to exactly what's going on.
Thank you. Next, I see Erica Wegener. Erica Wegener. I'll unmute you, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please proceed.
Good morning. My name's Erica Wegener, as you said, and I come before you today, like many others here, to voice my support for the Clackamas County Employees Association, of which I am a dues-paying member. Believe me, every single member of our union works hard for a living. I'm taking time off from my daily 10-hour shift to speak to you, which I will be making up late this evening to ensure that that important work gets done. The workers of the association have, among other things, driven Clackamas County's incredible results in housing our homeless neighbors at a time when surrounding counties have been reporting budget shortfalls and extreme hurdles in getting people off of our streets. The strength and unity provided by this union helps secure equitable wages and uphold dignity and respect for our workers doing this amazing work. I am committed to the cause of the union, and I firmly believe in its mission to advocate for employees' rights and well-being. The conflict between county management and the CCEA does not serve anyone. I know you cannot solve this issue by yourselves, but I strongly urge this council to advocate for the adoption of the contract offer which the workers of the CCEA have made so that we can get back to solving homelessness in Clackamas County and all the other work which our members perform for our county. Don't let the good work our county does grind to a halt while there is a crisis, while there is an ongoing crisis of public confidence. Don't squander the trust of Clackamas County's most vulnerable working-class citizens, and let us continue to do the work that has earned that trust. Thank you.
Next, I see Andreina N. Andreina N. I'll unmute you, and you'll have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Okay. My name is Andreina. I work for Clackamas County, and I'm here to support my Employees Association and my fellow coworkers who are unable to take time off of work to speak for themselves and speak for everyone else who was affected by this. The insurance premiums have personally affected me in a way where I had to basically reestablish care elsewhere during a strike with Providence, as well as travel time to find medical care for myself, who also commutes from Salem to work for Clackamas County. And that's not to say anything negative about the county. I grew up in Clackamas County, and I love working for Clackamas County and providing care for the people of the county. I don't really want to say too much about where I work, but I do want to emphasize that there is a lot of people affected by this, and it's not just about the premiums. We're losing trust in our, we're losing trust with our leaders. And clearly, as employees of the county, we're not the only ones experiencing that. County citizens have been experiencing a lack of trust with our leaders. So I ask that you all who have power- lack of trust with our leaders. So I ask that you all who have power use it for good and listen to our pleas of helping remedy these issues that we're all experiencing. Thank you.
This is a final call. If you are attending this meeting virtually and would like to speak, this is your last opportunity to please raise your hand, and I will call on you in the order that I see. Shelley Johnson, you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. I hadn't planned on speaking. My name is Shelley Johnson, and I've worked for the county since 2006. I have seen us go through several bargaining disagreements. I have seen several layoffs and have survived several layoffs myself. Never in my 18 years with the county have I felt so unvalued as an employee and seen such mass turnover for the same reasons. Our union is working harder than it has ever worked to make sure we get what we deserve, and I certainly hope that you guys will wake up and see the value of the employees and realize that this county is nothing without us. Truly, we do the hard work. We listen to everybody's struggles, and we give them the assistance that they need to the best of our ability. Please show us that you value us and come to an agreement on this contract. Thank you.
Next, Mary Cook. I see your hand. Mary Cook, I'll unmute you, and you'll have three minutes.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Perfect. I have to apologize first because I have a one-year-old running around. So if it gets loud, that's why. But I just wanted to speak today on my support for the Employees' Association and tell you a little bit about myself. I work in the DD program, phenomenal program. I absolutely love it. Great supervisors. I love what I do. I love my clients, and I love showing up and being able to work for them and support them to stay healthy and safe out in their community, just as everybody else can. It's been really hard lately to work, to do what I do and experience what, I'm sorry, there's my dogs, experience what I've experienced. In December, my family was displaced from a house fire, and the only reason, the, sorry, the only reason that we're able to be where we are is through the generosity of our friends who are deployed in Kosovo, and so we're staying in their home. The effect that the Kaiser premiums has had on us has been great. We've got five kids, and it was during the holidays and vacation, and it has been so incredibly difficult. And I used to be so proud to work for Clackamas County. I used to, you know, I just, I would feel with pride when people would ask me, who did I work for? What did I do? Did I like it? I can't say that anymore, and it's really disheartening. And, you know, I really encourage you guys, I know you're busy, but if you've got the time just to walk the aisles of where your employees work, just kind of get a feeling for the demeanor, get a feeling for vibe and kind of how it is. And I think you guys would learn a lot. So just please show up for us like we continue to show up for the citizens of Clackamas County.
This is once again a final call. If you are attending this meeting via Zoom and you would like to speak and have not yet spoken, please raise your hand. I will call on you in the order that I see. Mr. Vice Chair, I see none.
Okay, thank you. I will now close the public portion of this meeting, and we will move on. But first of all, I see Commissioner Schrader, you have your light on.
Gary, just for the public and for our employees, where are we in the process? And that might also be a question for Jane in terms of the Employees' Association negotiation.
Jane, would you answer, please?
Jane, could you do that? Just so people know.
Sure.
We continue to work, yeah.
My understanding is that the management team and the EA team met this past Monday in a mediation, and that they are headed, as Mr. Gonzalez stated, to another mediation on March, I think it's the 18th. We are currently, the status is that the union did declare impasse, that both sides have submitted last best offers, which are posted on the ERB website, if people would like to see what the county has offered and where the union is as well. And then, following that mediation session, I think if it is unsuccessful, the union will have the opportunity to determine next steps. I think the county will also be, at some point thereafter, be able to implement its last best offer as well. So there's a lot of moving parts here. But my understanding is that the management team is very eager to get back to the team, and that the board, I know, is very engaged in this and working very hard to reach resolution.
So we are at the point where there's last, those offers are still being negotiated. And the other question is, once this comes to fruition, I'm understanding that those back payments for healthcare will be reimbursed.
In full, once the contract is ratified.
Okay. I just want to make that clear publicly because union negotiations are always difficult. We do value our employees here, but I think the public needs to know how the process works and where we are. And I'm hopeful everything will be solved soon, and that the valuable employees here in this county will feel as if they're treated fairly and be back and continue to do their good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Mr. West.
Vice Chair, my question is, in lieu of the uniqueness of this meeting, a lot of people who have taken time away from work probably want to hear us, our comments regarding Melissa Fireside situation, Commissioner Fireside situation. And we still have a lot of business. We did change the rules recently that we allow public comment upfront if somebody wanted, especially so you could see what was on today's agenda and comment on it before we vote on it. But we have a unique situation. I would maybe want to pose that we maybe move the meeting on a little bit to address the issue that's before us now regarding Commissioner Fireside and where this board's going to go and speak to the public regarding that. I don't know what your thoughts are, but I just think that we should allow people to go back to work and get through this.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner West. I think that I agree that would be the appropriate thing to do. What I would like to do, however, is be mindful that we do have some staff, paid staff, that are on the clock with the presentation. So, and also, it's probably time for, not now, but maybe shortly after a recess. So if we could maybe conclude those comments in the next 15, 20 minutes, and then go to a recess and then convene back and do our business. Would that work? Commissioner West?
Yeah.
Is that ample time?
Yeah, so we'll address the Commissioner Fireside situation, take a recess, and come back and finish county business.
Correct.
Yeah.
That sounds reasonable to me.
So would you like to go first?
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair. Sure. None of us want to be here dealing with this right now. Our colleague, Commissioner Fireside, as of this week, faces eight felony counts, some of the worst type of crimes that could be done to another person. You know, people make mistakes. Things happen. But abusing the most vulnerable population in a predatory way is unconscionable, whether they're a child that's isolated and vulnerable, whether it's an 83-year-old man with cognitive disabilities and health issues who, in his grand jury, had to testify from his hospital room. There's just a different level here. I believe our responsibility as county commissioners is to the taxpayers, and that's why we're all here. We heard that in testimony today. The county exists because taxpayers fund this, and they have a certain level of expectation that we operate in an ethical and professional manner that continues to garner that trust, that allows us to do the important work of the people that we are called to serve. I believe that Commissioner Fireside is incapable of doing that, and she has broken that trust, and she has now put the trust of this board with the public in jeopardy also. I've already done this formally, but here on this dais today, I call for her formal resignation swiftly and immediately now. I can tell you this, everybody on this dais, and I even will say Chair Roberts takes this very seriously, and that we are looking at every option we can within our legal authority to protect the county and to bring accountability. We are looking to operate quickly. You know, I can't be, I can't gloss over this reality. There tends to be a type of politician or activist that comes out of the Emerge program. Emerge is an activist group that's supposed to prepare people to run for elected office. Many of them feel entitled to the office, and then, once they get that office they feel entitled to, instead of serving the public, they have to leave in disgrace. We just lost the Secretary of State, Shamiya Fagan. That was a graduate of that group. We have now Melissa Fireside, Commissioner Fireside, a graduate of that group, where she began to engage in local activism and politics. Not a criminal, and I'm not stating this, but there's also a lot of incompetency coming out of that group from other people who have been involved in that. I, I just think it's interesting how Melissa Fireside, even from this own dais, will opine and champion the most vulnerable. She'll virtue signal at every opportunity in the public and from this dais about how she's fighting for the small guy. Quite sanctimonious, too. All while, premeditated, she victimized and preyed on this community and an elderly man who cannot defend himself. This is a moral issue. This is a problem, and the Board of County Commissioners must take every measure it can to protect this county. I'm going to make a, first, I'm going to make a motion, and then I want to talk about some policy ideas that I want this board to consider moving forward so that we can protect against this in the future. I think it's clear that we can't ask any employee in this county who works at any level that if they were in the same situation that they would have to take leave to deal with their felony criminal issues without pay. We sure is not, we sure better not grant Melissa Fireside pay with leave, but she faces felony charges. But no other employee in Clackamas County would have that benefit. So I'm prepared to make a motion as we try to move forward with this and get to additional county business. I move that the Board of the BCC temporarily suspend Commissioner Fireside's pay as of March 2, 2024, pending further review by the County Council and Commissioner Fireside's administrative leave announcement.
So, Commissioner West, I'm going to second that because I want to have some discussion as to what my thoughts are as well.
So, yeah, Commissioner Schrader, go ahead.
This is an extremely difficult job, and I've always said to people, sometimes it's your job to take the tomatoes. These indictments are real. It has to go through a process, and that process will determine guilt or innocence. But I agree. I believe that Commissioner Fireside needs to come to work to earn her pay. I don't think, I've been on this dais many times, and as you know, I'm the sacrificial Democrat, okay, up here, but I still believe it's my duty, whether I agree or disagree with you, to show up and do the job. So that is my concern. I don't know what the outcome's going to be. These allegations are terribly serious, and it's going to have to go through a judicial process to prove innocence or guilt. But I would request that Commissioner Fireside, if she is not, I agree with Commissioner West, if she is taking a leave, it should be a leave without pay, because we need all five of us up here at the dais to do the work. So that's where I am seconding the motion. We have to go through the process. Things seem dire, and we will find out as the process moves forward whether Commissioner Fireside is guilty or innocent. But if she stays away, you have to be here to do the duty of the county. So that's all I have to say about that.
Yep. So, thank you, Commissioners, for your comments. I will, you know, I, we have always been, not always, but for often, find ourselves in very difficult positions and circumstances, and this one's unique for us, for me, and, you know, unique for Clackamas County, frankly. And I think the word trust or gaining trust, I think a lot of us know what trust is, and we know when we lose trust in someone or an organization or a government, it is very hard and difficult to repair that. And the loss of time, effort, dollars, monies that come with that are something that impacts us all and run very deep. So we really can't do our, the good work that we do without our statutorily designed five-person board. So the vagueness of the notice that we received from Commissioner Fireside with regard to how long she's been gone, we don't know. And so I think that the way the motion is worded, I think, is spot on, and we will make sure it's properly worded, and we hope that she will at least come to work and address that. It's unfortunate that we are taking the tomatoes today. So I know a lot of the comments were directed at us. I get that. So, but the pressure and the work that we need to do, we need to get our work done. And by, I think, a lot of you heard today, a number of very issues besides Commissioner Fireside's circumstances. But I always go back to being in a very difficult circumstance, and it's kind of my closing comments of my public statement on this matter. You know, sometimes you have to just simply put yourself's interests aside and ask yourself, what is in the best interest of the majority of the citizens of Clackamas County? And that is what I always fall back on at the end of the day. It may not be popular. Sometimes it's, you know, you make some people happy, you make everyone unhappy, but none, at the end of the day, you do the best you can with the knowledge you have. Lastly, on this matter, I did hear a lot of people talk about or raise what people knew or who, what people knew what and knew what, who knew when. We didn't know very much. Matter of fact, I learned a lot yesterday. And I think it's fair to say that probably most everyone on this dais today and recently probably had no idea of the magnitude of these charges. I had, I had, I had no idea. So, you know, I do know as investigations, and we've been counseled, that those are, those are held tight within the District Attorney or Department of Justice. So we can't really expect them to, we've got to give them the latitude to make their, do their investigation, and this is what they found. We get that. But I'll tell you what, I think the media did the best they could to expose everything that they had knowledge of and that they could validate. And frankly, that's really been our source. My point of bringing the media up in this is that's been our source. And again, we learned a lot, and I'm still trying to go over all the material that we got last, late yesterday. I'm sure there's more to come. But I will appreciate the motion, and so therefore, see no further comments.
Chair, excuse us. So Commissioner West, you said on your motion, March 2, 2024. Would you please correct to 2025? Yeah, I'll only correct. Do you want me to just restate it? Yes, please. So I move that the- So I move that the Board of County Commissioners temporarily suspend Commissioner Fireside's pay as of March 2, 2025, pending further review by County Council regarding Commissioner Fireside's administrative leave announcement. Does that work?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
So it's been, the motion's been clarified and moved by Commissioner West, been seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Clerk, could you take the poll?
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Vice Chair Savis.
Aye. Motion carries.
Motion passes three zero, Mr. Vice Chair.
We will take a...
One more thing.
Yes, Commissioner West.
Sorry. I, I, I think that we have to, I just want to talk about a couple of policy ideas that I want this board to be aware of. I emailed them last time on the plane, on the way home from DC, as we addressed this, so this doesn't happen again, and we're not caught flat-footed. I mean, I know this is a very unusual circumstance, but I want to make the public aware of some of the policy positions. And then, before the end of the meeting, during, Commissioner comments again later as we get through this, because I know we're going to take a recess and then come back to county business, I am going to make a motion that we look at bringing a once-a-month evening meeting back to Clackamas County. I will make that motion today. So if you want to see and say, if you, if you want to stay for that, you can, as we move forward, but I just want to make the public aware that that will be coming. So I think immediately we've got to consider a couple of policy changes moving forward, and it's really around leave. The public may not know this, County Commissioners, we're not employees, and we need to be clear about that within our rules and our operating rules as the Board of County Commissioners, that we're not employees, but we can be subject to some leave requirements potentially. I think that we need to talk about a policy that may establish that Commissioners are not employees and for the purpose of wage and hour and benefit compensation. And maybe a policy that starts to talk about a leave for a Commissioner based on some of the following issues. Commissioners are entitled to be on any protected leave such as military, OFLA, FMLA, et cetera, that are protected by state or federal law, or as provided by the benefit structure of the Commission around sick or vacation pay potentially, but we need to have some type of protected, maybe, leave language or idea of how that impacts Commissioners. However, Commissioners can maybe ask for administrative leave with pay and be approved by the majority vote of the Commission who is not seeking leave. The requister, well, in this instance, Commissioner Fireside, would have to recuse herself. This would be for a non-protective leave that was described earlier in my statement. Also, Commissioners can, when warranted, deny administrative leave with pay when the circumstances warrant such a denial. This would be for non-protective leave, including when a Commissioner is subject to a criminal action and needs to leave. Here, this should be required by the unanimous consent of the Commission, which can vote to suspend all pay, benefits, building access, duties, committees, et cetera. And remember, and that, and the member that's seeking this request would have to recuse themselves. I think it's interesting also to consider this, the voters clearly passed Measure 113. The voters want their electives, whether we agree with that measure or not, to show up. They want to show up in the legislature, and I'm sure they want them to show up at the county level. And so I think that this type of policy positions is congruent with what the voters have said and what had been decided by other elect, within the courts, with, within the state legislature. And so I think that can kind of frame maybe some of the ideas around that, but some transparency and clarity about paid leave for Commissioners is important moving forward. It turns out that we're also, this gets kind of wonky, we're what's called the statutory county. We can't just go to you voters and say, hey, if anybody's a convicted felon, they should, can you have the voters vote on saying, hey, if you're a convicted felon, you can't be a County Commissioner? The structures, we probably have to go, my correction, through the legislature potentially to have something changed.
I, I will look into it more, but that's my understanding.
This is all moving very fast for us, by the way. So we all found out, like, you guys, a lot on how serious this was, and actually how awful this was, and to the extent it was when you all did yesterday. But I think that the state legislature should allow for statutory counties, that if a Commissioner is convicted of a felony, then by unanimous consent, not just three, but unanimous consent of the board that they sent on, that Commissioner, after being convicted, can be removed. So we might need some state help, we just happen to also be in session, so maybe there's a way to get that done, maybe there's a priority bill left, I'm not quite sure the workings of that right now. Because in situations like this, what, what we're left with, I see a recall sign, and this is what that looks like. Right now, a recall, the only one to recall Commissioner Fireside, is super costly and very time-consuming, and it needs 15% of the voters who voted in the last gubernatorial race, 15% of those county voters. But this gives voters, and in an emergency situation like this, an expedited process to deal with somebody with these type of the felony charges they have, and the seriousness of them, and how predatory they are, if they refuse to step down. Now, I think there's a pretty strong bipartisan support developing and brewing right now from many great Democrats in our county also that are going to ask for her resignation. I've been on the phone with many of them. We're all moving, this has all moved very quickly since yesterday afternoon, but, so things are still developing. I hope with that, that the board would consider policy positions like this moving forward. I also hope that the board, depending on where learning what we can legally do and not do, and, and how to manage this, I think more to come in the week, next week or two. But I do think personally that we should also restrict her building access, she should no longer have an officer staff, that she should no longer be able to have valuable access to, to sensitive information with, to vulnerable populations, or the multi-billion-dollar budget that we manage. And so I'm going to work with my colleagues to figure out those details. We are taking it seriously and working hard, but we're not taking anything off the table within our legal authority to do as a board, to protect this county and the residents that we serve. And so I think that we do have unison in that, and these are just a few of my ideas that the board will consider moving forward. Thank you, that's all I have, Vice Chair.
So, Commissioner West, I just want to make one statement, too. I really do believe we need to look at these policies. In all the years I've been a Commissioner, we've never faced something like this before. I have a point of clarification. For example, you go on military leave, which is appropriate, and both you and I, this last go-round, spent time in Washington, DC, at the National Association of Counties, where we did the work of the county, and I'm assuming you're not talking about those kinds of duties that we have.
Can I address that?
Yeah.
Absolutely, of course not. My military service is federally protected and should be, and that is not at all equitable or any equivalency to the criminal actions of Commissioner Fireside. So I don't even want them mentioned in the same breath. Second, second, the other thing, the other thing along...
With our NACO?
Yeah, but with NACO, I was still present in every meeting. You can go back and look at them. I still made motions, and I still made actions, and I still represented this county, I still make sure that I'm available and here when necessary. And so you were also available in all those meetings, too, and we were still actually working for the county, which, I was, that's what I was hoping to talk about today, is all the great cool stuff we got done and influenced national policy. We'll have to do that later because of time, but, but I don't think they're really equivalent. Maybe these policies will help clarify what that means for all Commissioners within our board rules.
And the other thing I want to state is, because of modern technology, I oftentimes, I have children that don't live in the country or in the East Coast. With the electronics and the opportunities we have, I have never missed a meeting. I remember being up at 4:00 AM once to make sure I had attended a county meeting. So you do all the reading, you make the work, but you have to have a way to show up, and that is the point that I'm making today. Thanks. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. And my last comments to wrap a number of the things I've heard, both in print and also in emails, is that I think every Commissioner on this dais, every Commissioner of the Board, the four of us, Chair Roberts included, wants to explore every option we can, how do our avail, and get some legal advice on what we can do, what the risks are, and what we perhaps can't do as well. There's always, there's probably more things we can't do than we can do, always, unfortunately. So with that said, I just want people to know that we will be looking at that, that'll be our charge next week.
The letter.
And I, I do know that we have...
Are we going to do it?
No, we don't, we don't, I don't think we need to do that, per se, but just want to let you know, we are working on communications, our legal council has been tasked with working on communications around this matter, and also taking into account the motion we made and passed today, too. So with that said, we're going to take a short recess, and what do you all need, five minutes?
Sure.
Okay. So we'll convene back here at 11:50. Okay, we'll reconvene the, the business meeting, and Gary, what's next?
Thank you, Vice Chair Savis. Next is a public hearing. Item one, approval of a boundary change proposal number 2024-006 to annex territory located on southeast Kelso Road, Boring, into the Boring Water District. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. Jeff Munn's Assistant County Counsel will present. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Yes, we are here for a boundary change to the Boring Water District. This is a property owned by the Guide dogs for the blind. They are expanding, and they are having to be annexed into the Boring Water District. As the County Commission hears these boundary changes, essentially like a boundary commission, but we don't have one in Clackamas County, it's the Board that makes these decisions or reviews the applications. This application is, is compliant with our comprehensive plan, state law, as well as the Metro Code that controls these types of boundary changes. So it is an appropriate application, and, and it would be proper to approve.
So do any of my colleagues have any questions? All right. I will now open the public hearing on this item. Clerk, would you please moderate any in-person and virtual testimony?
Mr. Vice Chair, seeing no one who wishes to speak in person, I will now move to virtual testimony. If you are attending this meeting virtually, please raise your hand if you would like to speak on this specific item, and I will call on you in the order that I see. Tracy Brown, I want to mute you, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, good evening, morning. My name is Tracy Brown, and I'm a land needs planner, have been assisting the Guide dogs for the blind with this annexation, and so I'm, I just, I don't really have anything to say unless you had any questions for me. I'd be glad to try to answer those. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
If there's anyone else who'd like to speak, I'll ask you to please raise your hand. This is your final opportunity. If you are attending this meeting virtually, would like to speak on this specific item, please raise your hand, and I'll call on you in the order that I see. I see none, Mr. Vice Chair.
Absent any other testimony, I will now close the public hearing on this item, and unless my colleagues have any questions or concerns on this motion, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve boundary change proposal number 2024-006.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Schrader to approve boundary change proposal 2024-006, and it's been seconded by Commissioner West. Any further discussion? Clerk, could you call the poll?
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Vice Chair Savis.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero, Mr. Vice Chair.
Great, thank you. Gary, what is the next item?
Thank you. Next is the Consent Agenda. Andrew, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Consent Agenda. Item A, elected officials. One, approval of previous business meeting minutes, Board of County Commissioners. B, county administration. Approval of an amendment to the Clackamas County Courthouse Phase II funding agreement with the state of Oregon. Amendment value is $45 million. Total agreement value is $139,500. Funding is through the state of Oregon Article 11-Q bonds. No county general funds are involved. C, technology services. One, approval of a revenue grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Emergency Management for funds to procure cybersecurity software. Agreement value is $148,000 for two years. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. No county general funds are involved. D, health, housing, and human services. One, approval of a revenue behavioral health services agreement with Trillium Community Health Plan for behavioral health services, including peer and mobile crisis services. Agreement value is $856,139.30 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Health Plan. No county general funds are involved. Two, approval of personal services contract with Elio's Health for the Elio's Care Ops Automated Provider Documentation Platform. Contract value is $322,400 for three years. Funding is through Care Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Three, approval of a revenue grant agreement with Care Oregon for the Elio's Care Ops Automated Provider Documentation Platform. Agreement value is $322,400 for two years. Funding is through Care Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Four, approval of a grant renewal application to the U.S. Department of Labor for the homeless veterans reintegration program. Grant value is $900,000 for three years. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Labor. No county general funds are involved. Five, approval of a grant renewal application to Oregon State University for parenting education and support programming. Grant value is $571,000 for two years. Funding is through Oregon State University. No county general funds are involved. Six, approval of an intergovernmental grant agreement with the Oregon Health Authority Alcohol and Drug Policy Commission for soliciting youth feedback about substance use prevention programs. Agreement value is $10,000 for six months. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Seven, approval of an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for personnel, training, and equipment related to the 23-hour crisis stabilization center. Amendment value is $461,902 for 12 months. Total agreement value is $17,469,497 for 18 months. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Eight, approval of an amendment to a revenue intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for tobacco prevention and education programs. Amendment value is $35,926 for six months. Total agreement value is $12,397,424.76 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Nine, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the purchase and installation of detachable ski boxes on the Mount Hood Express. Agreement value is $32,016 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Transportation and a required match of $10,000 in statewide transportation improvement funds. No county general funds are involved. Ten, approval of a change order with ASA Construction for excavation and installation of low-point drains and vents at Clackamas Village. Change order value is $92,045 for three months. Total contract value is $3,792,673 for 13 months. Funding is through supportive housing service measure funds. No county general funds are involved. E, transportation and development. One, approval of a lease renewal with River City Boat Sales for facilities at Boone's Ferry Marina. Renewal value is $1,205,258 for five years. Total lease value is $2,262,332 for 10 years. Funding is through River City Boat Sales. No county general funds are involved. Two, approval of grant funding agreements with Zenner's Quality Meat Products, Cranston Machinery Company, Allied Technologies International, and Photo Solutions for business development grant awards. Total combined value of all four agreements is $183,000. Funding is through state lottery dollars. No county general funds are involved. Three, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Washington County for the Stafford 65th Elgin Roundabout Project. Agreement value is $1,750,000 for six years. Funding is through Washington County. No county general funds are involved. F, finance. One, approval of a supplemental budget resolution for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Fiscal impact is a net increase in appropriations of $4,582,298, including beginning fund balance, charges for services, federal, state, and local funding, and other inter-fund transfers. No county general funds are involved. Mr. Vice Chair, that concludes the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Do any of my colleagues wish to remove any item from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion, please?
I move we approve the Consent Agenda as read.
It's been moved by Commissioner Schrader and seconded by Commissioner West to approve the Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? Clerk, could you please call the poll?
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Gary. And what is next?
Vice Chair, would you please convene as the Water Environment Services Board?
I will recess the Board of County Commissioners and convene as Water Environment Services Board of Directors.
This is, this is Request for Consent Agenda for Water Environment Services. Andrew, would you please read the item?
Water- Water Environment Services Consent Agenda. Item A, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Happy Valley, Gladstone, Milwaukee, Oregon City, Westland, Wilsonville, Lake Oswego, Johnson City, and Oak Lodge Water Services for municipal stormwater permit compliance support, including mercury monitoring. Agreement value is $56,060 for five years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Surface Water Operating Funds and reimbursements by the parties. No county general funds are involved. Mr. Vice Chair, that concludes the consent agenda.
All right. Well, thank you. Do any of my colleagues wish to remove anything from this consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion, please?
Chair, remove that we approve the consent agenda as read for the Water Environment Services.
Second.
Been moved by Commissioner West and seconded by Commissioner Schrader to approve the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda. Clerk, could you take the poll?
Director Schrader?
Aye.
Director West?
Aye.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Thank you. I will now adjourn as the Water Environment Service, Services Board of Directors and reconvene as Board of County Commissioners. Gary?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Next is County Administrator Update. During this update, I want to inform you of a document I signed on your behalf during your board recess. Your recess was February 26, 2025 through March 5, 2025. Per the county code, Appendix C, Division C-050-0100, Section 5, the county administrator has authority to sign contracts on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners when there exists an emergency such that a quorum of the Board of Commissioners cannot meet before an action must be taken for the protection of the public and/or public goods. Using that definition, I signed one contract on your behalf during your recess. It is posted online. It's on the screen right now, and I just want to read it for the record. It is for disaster management, approval of a grant application to the Oregon Emergency Management Department for a Phase II flood mitigation feasibility study on the Upper Sandy River. Grant value is $290,943. Funding is through the Federal Emergency Management Agency and a required 25% match of $72,735.75 in budgeted county general funds. This met, this meets your board strategic plan. It is reasonable. It's money that's budgeted, so I did feel authorized to sign this, and county council agreed. I signed it. It's done. You don't need to ratify it, but I'm just informing you of what I've done. And for the record, it's now online and will be filed as such. Happy to answer any questions you may have of what I signed on your behalf.
Colleagues? Okay. Thank you, Gary. What's next?
Next is Commissioner Communications.
Okay. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Well, I'll, I'll be short and brief today. We just got back last night. Commissioner Van and I went to the National Association of Counties Conference. It was a fantastic conference. One of the things I've been working on with the Women of NACO, in conjunction with some of the stuff I, things I've been working on here, is that they are pulling together a youth action council where every year they'd like to have counties bring youth to, at their expense, parents, moms, and dads, to the National Association of Counties, where they have an opportunity to see counties in action, get to see the White House, get to visit, you know, the Library of Congress, so on and so forth. And to that end, I've been working with a couple of our school districts to come up with a curriculum that deals with county government, how does it work, county finance, how does it work. So I'm going to be busy putting together a packet with a curriculum guide with the materials that I pulled back for that, in that I'd like to be working with students, and I do have a current teaching license, believe it or not, to educate them as kind of a pipeline to public service, because I think we, we need that right now. I know that we're finding out that not as many people are entering public service now as, you know, folks who, who are our administrators, folks who run our departments, things of that sort. And I thought that would be an interesting thing to do. I do have a lot more to report, but I'm going to go ahead and bring those materials in, and on our next meeting, I'll be going ahead and presenting some of that. But that's the big takeaway for me this go-round. I had considered running for president of NACO this go-round, but I believe I'm going to give it a go next year so I can get things in process and elevate Clackamas County's opportunities at the national level. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner West?
Thank you. I'm going to be brief. A lot has already been said, and it's, this has been a very long meeting. But I do want to talk about one issue that I do want to bring up, and I don't know procedurally exactly how it can be done. When Tudy Smith was chair, she did take away the one evening meeting a month. I do think we should have some evening access. I mean, people work and they still want to be involved, and we have to make sure there's some pathway for that. I'm not sure how we can go about that, if it means that we have to, like, I don't know if I make, I don't know. Gary, I see you looking at me, maybe an idea, but let's talk about that. I, and I think that some concerns were brought up today by the public, and I keep hearing it also.
If I may, so you agreed to talk about this at your board retreat, which is next week. So as a team, you can talk about this in addition to your meeting days in general.
Okay, thanks for the reminder. Then, cool, then I will table it for that, for now, and maybe we can find a consensus between the four of us on what to do. Okay. We're taking it seriously. We hear you. We're trying to get there quickly. Bear with us. I know we need some evening meetings, so I just want the public to know that.
Thank you, Commissioner West, and I just want to let you know that, that's something that I, you know, one of the things I worked on early on, and I would naturally be supportive of that, you know, again, like to hear from my colleagues as well, to make sure that fits their schedule. I knew though that sometimes driving late at night, we have these long meetings is a challenge for some of us. Maybe we can make some accommodations so that that's less of a, of a challenge. I'm going to be brief too, but I do want to just say that I know we've had a couple recesses here. For me, it does not feel like that ever took place. So I kind of miss you guys, but I've been drowning in numbers and doing all kinds of, you know, transportation and a number of things. So I've been at it and, but I do want to just touch on something that I walk away, I just got burned in my brain a little bit, was our budget meeting we had. I think it was our last meeting together, one of the last meetings together, the budget meeting. And just to see that 30-year forecast, and if you look at that last box all the way to the right, you know, where we would be with an ending fund balance, or where we are today with an ending fund balance, or where we would be after 30 years. And there's only, you know, I know that $3 million 30 years from now is going to be, I have a lot less buying power than it does today. But nonetheless, just think about it this way. If we add an expense of $100,000 a year, and you multiply that times 30 years, that $3 million evaporates. So that's just something to factor in, and I would like to have some kind of a spreadsheet or Excel spreadsheet that gives us the ability to punch in a number and say, okay, if we increase our budget by X, you know, what does it look like? And I know that 30 years is way out there. Typically, we don't do that, but we did that in light of the, of the hefty payments for the courthouse, for the, for the lease of the courthouse, for the P3. But that's something to, to, to think about, and something that's in, in my, back of my mind, is that what can we really afford going forward? And as I said then, and I will say it over and over and over, it's going to take a lot of fiscal discipline for not just this commission, but in commissions for years to come beyond our, our roles here as commissioners to keep that, that, to maintain that fiscal discipline. So it'll be challenging not knowing what we have in the future for the next 30 years as it relates to inflation and cost and so forth for our, our valued employees and trying to serve our public who needs those services. So that's my brief comments for today, and I will see no further comments. For the good of the order, I will now adjourn.